So, that was a little small with the basketball, so. Um, they kinda liked it at first. They were like, this is kinda corny, but then once they got into it, it started to like the boyfriend thing and yeah, the guys got really into it. But, second thing is, um, fun at bat. You would say baseball was nice enough to sponsor our school and give us a bunch of equipment. And, um, we, I wanted to work on a little bit of baseball before the season came up, so. When we started, like, Coach Pitts, um, Cal Ripken, they had a little bit more of an idea before we started off. And, um, fun at bat program, it's a great program for, um, integrating character and education themes like teamwork, respect, and resilience, and a focus on fun, skill development, and inclusion. And even in PE, we do a little bit of art and color one day. And, um, a couple of my coworkers were nice enough to read the fun batch of their class, um, the books that they gave us, and I think we got through pre- preschool all the way up to fifth grade. Everybody got to use them and play. So, yeah, and then we had a team dress up day, um, kinda bracing with pride books, whoever dressed up the most, so. A lot of people joined that, so that was pretty good. And then lastly, summer PE fitness challenge, challenge. I like to do lifetime fitness, so. Um, I'm gonna come up with an idea where throughout the school, I'll send a packet home. It's not mandatory, but if students wanna do it and parents sign off, like, every day they do something different, like move in Monday, try Tuesday, walk about Wednesday, throwback Thursday. And I know some kids have the ability to go to the pool here, some don't, so. There can be alternatives just so every kid can, um, try it out. And then when they come back in August, if they have the full sheet signed out, it's kinda like reading during summer, like where your parents check it out. If they bring back the packet, they can get like a certificate to the pizza shop or a gift card, depending on how much money I wanna spend or how much the school donates. And then, um, a lot of the students were very uncoordinated. So I did a jump rope challenge. It's like a karate theme from like white belt, yellow belt, green, all the way up to black. And it's how long you can consecutively jump rope in a row. And black belt is pretty hard for fifth grade. It's three hundred. Only had one student get there. And then a second grader, um, was able to do it after a while. Um, in about three months, um, I had two students get up to the black belt. And then brown belt, brown belt, it was like a hundred and fifty in a row. And I have about five or six students that were able to do this, so. Um, I'm pretty happy from the beginning of August to now, because I know last year, there wasn't that big of a PE program, so, um, trying to turn that around and kinda bring it forward, so. I think that's all I have, yeah.
Oh, any questions?
Want to remind the administrators that these are the last two things and what we've had the last couple of months. The board really and truly enjoys that, so keep up the good work. Uh, communication from the public.
Nope.
Okay, item number one forty point zero, I need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Dallas, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kayla. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Item number one forty one point zero, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kayla, second by Scott. Board discussion. Everything okay with the?
Good.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Item number one forty two, administrative reports. I just have a couple. We had a big Three Rivers Co-op meeting last week. Wednesday. Where all the superintendent and all of the, uh, board representatives that were on the co-op board. And it was dealing with where we sit as far as whether or not to dissolve the co-op and so on and so forth. What to work forward, what we could do and so on and so forth, and, uh, came up with some ideas and so on and so forth, but as that, from that meeting, the co-op is gonna continue on as it is now. And as, and as it has been. Um, so there's no, gonna be dissolving of the co-op at this point in time. Uh, it may be down in the future, who knows, but, but, uh, some of it dealt with, uh, Perkins, some dealt with, uh, after-school programs and grants and so on and so forth. And to come up with some other ideas of what the co-op can do for us between now and, but at least for a year now, everything is gonna be the way it is. Uh, I didn't want to add to that discussion. It's gonna be pretty much normal. And then maybe any, any year or two that, that we maybe, well, I know at least two years, we're gonna be replacing our business manager. Because she's gonna retire. So, uh, that's where the co-op sits. Uh, second day, uh, we've got graduation Saturday. Uh, board member's gonna be, okay, that's eleven o'clock, we're timing on that night, quarter two. Quarter two? Okay, and this at the? And the final thing is, uh, you got bills next month. He's got bills.
No, you don't.
Any questions? Okay, Carol.
Good evening, everyone. I've been working with Sarah. Thank you for coming tonight on the SOR, SOR, S R O contract. And we'll be dealing with that later on the agenda, and they're here to help us if, if we have any questions on that. Um, if we need to refresh our memories on the contact, contract price and stuff, I have that here. Aaron's working on upgrading the vehicle fleet. Um, the water line with the City of Martin is scheduled to get going here after the sidewalk is, is replaced over on the north side of the parking lot. Ken and Aaron, along with the Buildings and Ground Committee, which is Dallas and Ryan, met with Casey and Bud last Thursday. We walked around the site and talked about some additional projects and what needed to be done and, and to complete that project, so. Waiting for some additional information before we can move or give you more information. As you said, graduation is Saturday. There's all kinds of events this week. I didn't know Kerry was going to go through all those in her report, so I just printed the flyers so that I can look at that. Uh, administration has been working on in-service plans for the beginning of next year. I feel pretty good about where we're at already with that. Some of the PE opportunities that we're gonna have, motivational speakers start the year, so we have some good stuff planned for to kick off next year. Negotiations with BCA and BCCEA and administration have been completed, and that'll be later on the agenda. I would like to thank everyone who helped celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week last week. I think everybody, um, felt good about the, the activities that went on. And then I also wanna thank the kitchen staff. They served our lunch at the Three Rivers meeting and lots of compliments, and I appreciate all the kitchen staff does, so they need an acknowledgement for that. PBIS, excited for that training to get started. May twenty eighth, twenty ninth, and that'll help us set things in place to kick off the year next year. Uh, the board needs to pick a date to do gavel training with Wade Pogney again. I have some dates that we can discuss. Um, our board meeting in July is on the twenty first. He could come the twenty second, so I have some different dates that we can look at for that. Um, summer projects. The ones that we talked about. Thursday during the committee meeting, um, bids for the artificial turf will be in by the end of the month. Looking at that. Propane tank for number one diesel fuel for the winter. Some roofing going on and waiting for quotes on that. Replacing the lights on the AC, replacing the stage curtains in the Legion. And that's what I have for this month. Any questions?
Question? Thank you, Carol. Uh, Carrie?
Um, on my, um, on my shoot, it's in the board meeting minutes, I have the attendance for April, and the juniors won the Warrior Cup Challenge during the month of April with an eighty-six point two seven percentage. Um, we're starting to see those, those numbers go up a little bit, everybody's getting more healthy from the cold and flu season. Um, I've also attached some breakdowns of our state attest, excuse me, our state assessment for this year's juniors, and it shows that we have similar for growth in several different areas. Um, if I do look at this across the spectrum, we have some similarities and we have some other areas where we have grown, so. Just a little bit of data in there. Uh, we did some math placement testing for the incoming eighth graders at the Bennett County Junior High, or excuse me, Middle School. Um, we did that on Tuesday of last week, and that is going to be cross-referenced with their star math scores, their South Dakota State math scores, and then communications with the math teachers to kinda figure out the best placement for each student so that we're getting them in the right classes so they move forward more effectively. Uh, so the spring play, we had that on Monday, May eighth, and we had a strong involvement of students in dramas this year, and we've really been able to enjoy their talents, um, on and off the stage, because they are included in the classes as well. Um, our track involved students have had a great showing this, so far this year, and I congratulate them and their coaches on a wonderful mid-season so far. There will be, um, a senior awards night this year, and that's a little bit different from normal. We're trying to have a, um, family dinner to kind of make it a little bit more special evening, and after that, we will have um, the award ceremony, and with that, we're going to have a special recognition of students that are committing to finish or continue their education in post-secondary levels, whether that is academic and or sports oriented, so we're gonna do that. School happenings, um, we celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week. Um, and I really want to recognize the goals our teachers play in not only the education of students, but in the personal growth of those students' lives. Um, we're working on our schedule for next year, which will include a freshman and sophomore seminar course, which will better provide educational and social emotional support as students transition into high school and move forward in their high school careers. Um, the staff has been involved in the discussion for student handbook and edits as we prepare for next year, and the high school CNA team made great gains in their goals this year and have drafted forward progress steps that they'll be working towards for next year. Any questions?
Hey. Thank you, Carrie. And Kayla?
Um, I've also included attendance. I wanted to show you kind of, um, where we were with third quarter, who's like the whole year. Very, very comparable with that. Um, testing data was also included. Um, I should've included the state as well, because when we look at, um, where our scores are compared to the state, we're actually very similar. So a lot of schools are finding, um, that they're kind of in that same area, same range as well. Um, we have a lot of things that we can do to grow, of course. Um, I also included our star data. I, I only included math. I thought I would be, um, completed with reading or YLA today, but we just aren't quite complete, um, so I wanted to not include any complete data for you. Um, but the interesting thing is, um, the students, when they, when they took their star test and they compared it to what they did for their state test, there was not a lot of, a few of them weren't very comparable. And so, uh, the teacher had a conversation with them about that, and they asked if they could retake it. And of course, we can't retake the state test, because, you know, you can only get one shot. Uh, but we had students that, um, opted to take their star test again and of course did a lot better and showed actually where they were at, so. We've had a lot of conversations with our students about that. That when, when we, when you take the assessment, we really need you to do your best the first time, because you can't retake that state test. I asked one class that they did their best on it, and they said, half of them raised their hand and said, no, I could've done better. And so that kind of becomes frustrating, because you get this data and you can't change it. And then that's how we're reflected on. And so making those, um, discussions and trying to figure out, I mean, for years, for years, we've always tried to figure out what is that carrot A P dangle in front of them to get them to do their best, because that's what we want them. And we know it's just a snapshot at that moment. But, you know, they could've done, they could do better in some instances, and other students, you know, they, they do do their best. But overall, it would be nice to see them do better. So being able to retake the test, some students were able to show some better, better gains, better ability in their area as well. Um, so I just have some key takeaways there for you to read through. Um, and then just some student happenings. We are giving a field day on Wednesday when it's not ninety degrees, which is great. It'll be seventy, so, um, we'll go out in the afternoon and do different stations. Um, middle school awards will be on, on Monday, the nineteenth, at three o'clock. And, uh, Mrs. Hicks had the science fair last week, so that, that was, um, fun to watch the students do their, their things. Um, and I just accolades a congratulations to the spring play participants. We've got some middle schoolers involved. Middle school athletes are kind of winding down their season. Uh, they're doing very well. And, um, and then I just want the students to know I'm very proud of them for working hard and, and and there's quite a few that have been really making sure they finish the year strong, so.
Questions? Thank you, Kayla. Melissa?
Um, I looked at our attendance, and our attendance rate is ninety-two percent, which is exactly the same as what it was last year at this time. So I was kinda hoping with all of our attendance awards and the Warrior Week and, um, weekly challenges, I was hoping that would kind of go up a little bit, so maybe we'll step it up next year and kind of get some more competitive things going on for attendance. Um, end of year testing. We're starting on our star reading and math. Um, I looked today, we're really close to being done, so. Maybe next board report, I can have a little more data on that. Um, state testing, hundred percent completion on state testing, so that was good for all of our students. Ingrades through, in grades three through five, and that's who took it at the elementary. Um, we're currently below average in both reading and math, but we're gonna wait to see what the state report card says, um, and we're just gonna start planning, more professional development for things like science of reading, something that the state is offering. We're also applying for a reading grant, literacy grant, so we're kind of helping to get some support in for our teachers, some maybe new curriculum, some more, um, things that will help them improve our reading scores. So we got, we got work to do down there, too. Um, end of the year, fun day is complete. Our schedule is complete for that. I'll post that on the website, so parents can kind of know when their kids are gonna be participating and where they're gonna be at. Um, fifth grade had a, um, fifth grade will go to the middle school on May fifteenth, and they're gonna kind of do a little transition. They're gonna get to eat lunch with the middle schoolers, so they're looking forward to that. Kent Stark came into the building, and they sat with our kindergarteners, so they're kind of learning about how school's gonna look next year. Um, a group of our kids went to the Philip Music Festival, and the fifth grade band, uh, they played three pieces, the fifth grade band. Um, fourth graders played their recorders. And then, uh, we had a fifth grade music concert, which Nick kind of showed you with the rhythm sticks and dancing. I thought it was a pretty big hit, because the kids got to move. It was di, it was a different concert, so. Um, and we had kindergarten roundup on May first, so kind of a lot of things going on.
Questions? Thank you, Melissa. Amy?
Um, I have the date wrong. Carol, our PBS training is the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, and twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. On May twenty-seventh, we're meeting, um, each building has, um, it's gonna be a literacy committee. Melissa talked about a reading grant. It's a four-year grant that, um, is gonna take some time to fill out, but I think it's gonna provide us with some extra support. The state is really pushing, um, literacy, and so there are some people going to training, um, this summer. So hopefully it will provide us with some more tools. Um, this is our last year in the CEEP program, and we'll hopefully reapply um, the following year. Every year we still have to do an application, so I'll be submitting that before the end of June. Um, we still do not have our allocations for federal programs yet, which is odd. I think, I think it's odd, so we'll be looking for that, and hopefully they won't make us do it quickly like with other things. Um, I just wanna really quickly thank our kitchen staff. This time of year is really busy for them. They have, not only do they have their own kitchen prep, they have field trips, but they have to prep some dishes for. They have all the meals that they're prepping for this week. So it's like double duty, and they do an amazing job, so I just want to give them kudos for all the time and and prep and stuff they do for our, for our school.
Questions? Thank you, Amy. Joe?
Not until later, and I have a present for you guys.
Okay. Item number one forty-three point zero. I maintain a motion to approve the following contracts for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Mackenzie Eastman, VCHS art instructor, fifty thousand one hundred and sixty. Jacob Wong, Assistant VCHS volleyball coach, two thousand five hundred and seventy. Penny Wong, athletic director, sixteen thousand. So, motion by Dallas, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kayla. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Uh, item number one forty-four point zero, I need a motion to approve the following resignation is effective at the end of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Karen Getzinger plays. Karen Getzinger, MGS School Counselor, Jeff, their livestream advisor. So, motion by Scott, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dallas. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Item number one forty-five point zero. Motion to replace the current board policies with KSP school law board policies effective July one, twenty twenty-five. Motion by Dallas.
Second.
Second by Scott. Board discussion.
Was it under taken?
Thanks for that.
I think probably streamlined a lot of things. Really did. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Item number one forty-six point zero. Motion to approve the SRO School Resource Officer contract with Bennett County Commissioners and Bennett County Sheriff. So, motion by Dallas.
Yeah.
Or, I'm sorry, Scott. Second by Dallas. Board discussion.
Do you guys wanna add anything to that? Like, how soon will the advertisements go out, once this is agreed?
Quickly.
So, we, we have a commission meeting next Wednesday. And, um, and once this is approved, they'll approve, everybody will sign, and we can start advertising, hopefully, and get something in the paper by then. I guess it's as, as soon as Jason gets to it.
Okay, okay.
Thank you for being there.
No, thanks. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Item number one forty-seven point zero, motion to accept the negotiated agreement with the Bennett County Education Association for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Motion by Kayla, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dallas. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Item number one forty-eight point zero. Motion to accept the negotiated agreement with Bennett County Classified Education Association for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Motion by Dallas.
Second.
Second by Kayla. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. This is?
I need you to sign with two D Mopets, I'm getting the wrong spot, so Dallas, you're gonna have to sign with your hand.
Okay. That's it. Do we have one for the?
No.
For the other?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
It is small, though.
Okay, item number one forty-nine point zero, motion to offer twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six administrative contracts.
Someone?
Motion by Dallas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kayla. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number one fifty point zero, motion to offer twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six certified contracts.
Someone?
Motion by Dallas, is there a second? Second by Kayla. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion to offer the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six classified contracts.
Someone?
Motion by Dallas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kayla. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Okay, item number one fifty-two. Had a bunch up in here. Uh, this one would be Division One, representative of five years. You should have, you should have had those ballots in there. Uh, I believe that we're gonna recommend Jordan Bauer, rep two. So can I get a motion to cast that ballot for Jordan Bauer?
I will make motion to cast the ballot for Jordan Bauer for a five-year term in Division One.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dallas. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Uh, this will be Division Two, secondary principal and assistant principal for a three-year term.
Division three.
What?
Division three.
Division three, sorry about that. And recommend Jeff. And recommending Jeff Sheehan on him.
I'll make a motion to cast the ballot for Jeff Sheehan for the principal assistant principal for a three-year term in Division Three.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kayla. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to cast a ballot for the Small Group Board of Education Representative. That is...
Small school.
Small school.
There's only one person out there. Billy Clant.
Billy Clant?
So moved.
Motion for Billy Clant in the party county, is there, do we have a second? Second by Dallas. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. East River at Large. Recommendation is Tim Lible of Hitchcock, New Jersey.
I'll make a motion to cast the ballot for Tim Lible for East River Art Representative.
Is there a second? Second by Kayla. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Silent comment, they have that many in... I don't ever remember.
Usually about two or three, I know.
Okay, now we've got about five amendments to the Constitution. Amendment number one, recommendation is to vote yes.
I will make a motion to vote yes on amendment number one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dallas. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Amendment number two. The recommendation would be to vote yes on that amendment.
I will make a motion to vote yes on amendment number two.
Motion by Scott, do I have a second? Second by Kayla. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number three, recommendation would be to vote yes on that one.
I will make a motion to vote yes on amendment number three.
I have a motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dallas. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Amendment number four, recommendation would be yes.
Make a motion to vote yes on amendment number four.
A motion by Scott, is there a second? Second by Kayla. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Amendment number five, recommendation would be yes.
Make a motion to vote yes on amendment number five.
Do I have a motion by Scott, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dallas. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I always have to sign always, huh?
Yes.
And they, no, no, I don't. I'm sorry, child. I just... Okay, that'll work. Item number 161.0. Motion to surplus the following. MGS time clock computer and old, which is old and outdated. Motion by Kayla, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Board discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 162.0. Presentation of the 2025-2026 preliminary budget.
That's really preliminary, guys. It's probably the most preliminary I've ever done because we don't have allocations yet from the state, so. Well, I guess. Want a prelim?
The final will be out in October. I'm taking the part.
I do have an extra. I do have an extra. I have one, sorry. Tim, you don't need a prelim, do you?
I'm not, it's okay.
Thank you. I do, I have one left, you want it?
Sure.
Okay, there's some way to create a deal, look at it. Item number 163.0. I need a motion to enter into executive session for personnel matters pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2. Student issues pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2. Two negotiations pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2. Legal issues pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2 with possible action. Motion by Dallas, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Reminder to the board, confidentiality was discussed in the thinking session, must strictly adhere to. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we are in the thinking session.
In possession at some of the union time.
Six oh five.
At six oh five.
Make the motion to adjourn?
Second by Dallas. Discussion. Hearing now, all papers, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned at six oh six. Thank you people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need to visit you.
Suppose they need flowers?
We'll have the lights on. Can you make sure that door is shut, like when you go out just pull on it?
Okay.